Guys.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to let you know that I, the staff was very nice and got me a DVD. And so I did that and signed, so I'm all set.
Did the Mullen deal?
Yeah. And just to compliment the board, I could not believe when Terry Alvin went on and on and that woman didn't get it, that she'd got everything she wanted and all she had to do was give me thirty yards of asphalt. I said, "It's the first time I ever dope slapped my TV."
Camera's on.
All right.
Should we, yeah?
Here we are, okay.
We can do announcements.
Let's get, so.
Do you want the first motion?
Let's get the.
Continuances?
Seven A, B, C.
Yes, please.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to take items seven A, seven B, and seven C out of order and together for discussion purposes.
Second.
Second, moved in second to take out of order, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, five zero zero. This is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section four point two point five point ten, automobile dealership which may include integrated structured parking of the zoning bylaws, sixty-four Cambridge Street, Herb Chambers Cambridge Street LLC applicant. Seven B is continued public hearing, application for approval of a site plan, sixty-four Cambridge Street, Herb Chambers Cambridge Street LLC applicant. And seven C is continued discussion, application for approval of minor engineering change, sixty-four Cambridge Street.
That should read sixty-two.
Sixty-two Cambridge Street. Herb Chambers Street LL, Herb Chambers Cambridge Street LLC applicant.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to continue this matter to the planning board meeting of April fourth, twenty nineteen, as requested by the applicant's attorney in an email dated March twenty-first, twenty nineteen.
Okay, we're continuing these matters, okay. Been moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained? Six zero zero. You're both citizens, citizens' time is here. Nothing not on the agenda?
No.
Okay. Announcements in this letter, is this going to be part of your announcements or discussion?
Discussion.
Discussion, okay. Announcements.
One announcement unless anyone has anything else. The town elections are finally here soon, on April sixth, from eight to eight at the Burlington High School. As a staff member, it's, and it's nice when elections finally happen. Because many of you get very busy during this election season, so, anyway, that's coming up.
I have one more announcement. The high school play Mama Mia starts tomorrow night, and it's tomorrow and Saturday, and then the following Sunday.
Following Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
Oh, fo- following, for the following next two weekends. Go see Mama Mia.
I do have one thing I need to bring up. During the recent BCAT planning board debate, a candidate for planning board made what I believe to be an incorrect statement when he said that the planning board is not complying with state law. He stated, and I quote, "It is required by state law for any planning board constructed such as ours under Mass General Law, Chapter forty-one, Section eighty-one A, that the planning board should come before town meeting and forecast expectations, costs, plans, et cetera, that they foresee for the upcoming year." And over the past several years, I've noticed that all of the boards that have come before the town meeting, the planning board hasn't done this. And my question for the other candidate is, don't you think it's important, one, not only to comply with state law, but to involve town meeting in the actual planning process? Because ultimately, town meeting has a say or jurisdiction over almost every agency in town. Close quote. It should be noted that the day before, on March thirteenth, the campaign manager for this candidate sent an email to the town clerk under the subject, "Planning Board Reports." And the text of the email from the candidate's campaign manager read, and I quote, "Hi Amy, just to make sure I am reading this part of Mass General Law correctly, shouldn't the planning board be submitting at least annually a report to town meeting of forecasts for projects, expenses, plans, developments, et cetera, to town meeting? Are they doing something to satisfy this requirement? I can't recall seeing anything like formal reports presented at town meeting over the years." At that point, there was a link to Mass General Law, Chapter forty-one, Section eighty-one C, as in Charles. If you go to Mass General Law, Chapter forty-one, eighty-one C, it's entitled, "Studies and Reports of Board Acting as Park Commissioners." In some communities, the planning board apparently is also the park commissioners. In Burlington, that is not the case. It's my understanding this email to the town clerk from the candidate's campaign manager was forwarded by the town clerk to the planning director. And the planning director emailed the candidate's campaign manager and pointed out that eighty-one C applies to a planning board when the planning board is also the town's park commissioners. And that is not the case here in Burlington. If the candidate had taken time to read Chapter forty-one, Section eighty-one C, he would know it references planning boards that are also acting as park commissioners. And this does not apply to the Burlington Planning Board. Ultimately, it's the responsibility of the candidate for election to the planning board, and not the campaign manager, to read and understand Mass General Law, Chapter forty-one, Section eighty-one A, and all the other subsections from eighty-one A through eighty-one double G, all those that apply to the planning board. Why am I mentioning this here tonight? Firstly, in a forum widely available to the citizens of Burlington, such as BCAT, the planning board has been erroneously accused of not complying with state law. I think this board has a duty to the citizens of Burlington to answer this false allegation, and is best doing it on BCAT, the same forum on which the false allegation was made. Secondly, if this candidate is contacting Burlington voters by telephone or in face-to-face meetings, and if he's making the same false allegation, the voters need to be given all the facts and the sources to get the correct information. Anyone with access to a search engine such as Google or Bing need only enter MGL or Mass General Law, Chapter forty-one, Section one eighty-one A. Check to make sure you've arrived at an official state website, beginning with masslegislator.gov. There you will see on the left side of the page, a number of clickable links to the Massachusetts statute, and you can go to any part you want, including one eighty-one A and eighty-one C, or many more. I think that covers what I want to, so if the particular candidate is watching this and wants to come in and speak to us, please come. I will certainly let you speak if you disagree with my interpretation of Mass General Law, Chapter eighty-one C. Moving on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
There are no legal notices of interest. They could also, if they can't make it tonight, they could come to our next meeting on April fourth, which is still two days before the election. There are no non approvals, no administrative matters of appointment. I did ask for citizens' time, but I'll ask again, anyone here to speak on a matter that is not on the agenda? Seeing none?
I'm the one who thought you hadn't done it, sorry about that.
You're the what?
I thought you hadn't done citizens' time, I was mistaken.
Oh, we did it twice because most citizens showed up.
Okay.
Matters reported, public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section six point one point one point one, alteration of a nonconforming use of the zoning bylaws, three thirty-six Cambridge Street, Lynn White Sue, et al., applicant.
Good evening.
Evening.
Thomas Murphy here, representing the applicant. Unable to be here this evening for a medical situation, but she will be here next time, so.
Tom, I'm not sure your mic is on.
Yeah. Pull it closer.
I'm not sure your microphone is on.
Green light's on.
Okay.
By way of background, Mr. Chairman, this property, three thirty-six Cambridge Street, is the old White House just past Lakashas heading towards Bill Rucker. If you look at the Board of Assessors records on the property, the house was built in eighteen twenty, so it's one of the whole.
I don't know whether it's the noise there, could you pull that mic a little bit closer, Tom, please?
We can't hear you.
The blow isn't allowed. Blow is allowed, it's.
I'm trying to turn the heat down, but it's like a jet engine over there.
Property in question's at three thirty-six Cambridge Street, which is on, a little ways down past Lakashas on the right as you're going towards Bill Rucker. It's an old house, according to the town assessors' records, it was built in eighteen twenty, so it's one of the older houses in town. For years, this property was part of the larger parcel behind, which I believe is also in front of you folks, the old tenor, whatever that girl was.
One twenty-eight electric, Reham Works, yeah.
That was all part of the same property until last June, I believe, when the new owners of the larger property sold the house to my client.
Can you guys hear, I think the microphone might be a little louder.
Try the other mic too.
Yeah.
That's working tough.
Sorry.
So in any event, my client bought this particular house from the owner of the large parcel that is also before you. Up until that point, this was all part of the same parcel of land. At some point, that parcel was rezoned to industrial, so this house actually sits on an industrially zoned lot. Nevertheless, since eighteen twenty, it's been a, it's been a residence, and for a lot, many of those years, some of you, Joe probably remembers Dr. Chris, Christmas, who was a dentist, had his office there for a number of years. There has been three residential apartments in the house, one on the first floor behind the office area, and two on the second floor, for a number of years. And back when my client purchased, or actually, just before my client purchased the property back in, I think it was June of last year, it might have been July, the gentleman who had bought the whole large parcel, his attorney contacted the building department to confirm that this house is able to be used as a combined office space and residential space, in the manner that it has been for a number of years. That attorney did a fair amount of research, provided a whole bunch of documentation to the building inspector. Building inspector answered saying, yes, it is, it's a nonconforming grandfathered use as a three-family structure with a, with an office commercial space in the front. So with all that, my client purchased it and wants to fix it up a bit and continue to use it, which is different than a lot of projects that have come before you recently, where people are looking to knock down older houses. My client's looking to restore it, so that's, I would submit, is a good thing. But to make it financially viable, she wants to put a small addition on, which if you look here, the shaded areas is going to be the addition. This house has a larger structure here with a little tail going off the back, looking to widen the little tail a little bit. This right here is just a second means of egress that they're going to box in, it's just stairs to get up to the second floor and down. So by putting this addition on, they are altering pre-existing nonconforming use, and they need a special permit for this board to make the determination that the altered structure is not going to be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing use is. So that's the purpose of the submission that's before you. As part and parcel of the submission, staff asked us to get kind of an enhanced site plan of the site, because I guess there wasn't one on record, which is happening, actually came into my office just before I came over here, so we're anticipating getting postponed, and I'll bring that to staff tomorrow. But you'll have a site plan showing that where the utilities come in and all that type of thing. There's going to be some, the proposal is to have the parking area where the current paved area is on the site. There's also currently a paved driveway on this side that looks like it's going to stay here, if they need a dumpster, they'll put the dumpster back there. There's parking for nine spaces, if you do the parking requirements, depending on what, it's, for residential, it's two spaces per unit for the, for up to two family, then instead for multifamily, it's one and a half per unit. So this is a three-family, if it's one and a half per unit, you need four and a half, you need two because of the thousand, thousand square feet, you need two spaces. The office is about eight hundred square feet. So roughly, you need, you need about six spaces, seven depending how you define the residential end of it, and there's nine there. So there's sufficient parking under the bylaw. There'll be some enhancement of the, of the exterior, just to bring, bring it up to snuff. And there'll be quite a bit of work done to the interior of the house, in terms of just rehabbing it and things of that nature. I appeared before the, it was a meeting of the Historical Commission last week over at the Grandview Farms, and I explained to them what we're trying to do here, and I saw that Mike Trudeau came in, but they were pretty happy, obviously, that we're saving the house. So that's the, that's the ultimate goal here, is to get this work done, that it becomes, you know, she'll rent the top three, the three apartments and, you know, some, some professional office use of the, of the office downstairs is what she anticipates. And I would submit that it clearly, in my opinion, is not more detrimental, in fact, it's a positive thing to save this house. If this doesn't, if she's not able to do this, frankly, the house will probably have to get knocked down, and now the, the use reverts to industrial, because that's what the site is currently zoned for. So the new use in there would have to be something that fits within an industrial zone, which clearly, in my opinion, is not as beneficial as a nice old house restored on the main street of Burlington. So that in a nutshell is what we're looking to do. Like I said, I didn't have, I didn't get the enhanced site plan in time to get it before you folks for tonight, so I told staff that I'd come in and just give you a little introduction, let you know what this was all about. I'll get the enhanced plan to them, hopefully tomorrow, and so they'll have time to look at it before the next meeting. So if there's any questions on the, the site layout, things of that nature, so I'll maybe address those. But that's basically what the project is about, and that's what she's looking to do. Thank you.
Department reports, Caroline.
Yep. Inspector of Buildings is favorable with conditions. They are a favorable, a favorable approval for section six finding from the Town of Burlington Planning Board. They require dumpster loc, dumpster enclosure, and they want to know where the lo, the location, which you said is at the back of that driveway. Require a handicap accessible ramp in accordance with the Mass State Architectural Barriers Board CMR five twenty-one, leading to the first floor commercial space. They want, require a plan to show handicap sidewalk curb cut access in accordance with the Mass State Architectural Barriers Board Regulation, CMR five twenty-one, leading from parking lot to building. Install a sidewalk from the rear exit door, rear addition to the parking lot. The plans need to show utilities, for example, water, sewer, gas, sprinkler, and electrical services. Will there be any outside mechanical equipment, such as HVAC equipment or electrical transformer? And require drawings to show buffer zone along the left side of property line to the edge of parking, landscape and or fencing within the buffer. And that's it for, that's it for. For that, the fire department has, says, is favorable with conditions. Approval with the following modifications, build, building shall be sprinkled to NFPA thirteen standard, fire alarm system to be reviewed and approved by the fire department, carbon monoxide protection is required, and a knock, knock box is required for the commercial space. And DPW, are the DPWs standard or?
Yes.
They are, they're, a lot of the departments, as we've asked for the site plan to be revised, revised, we got a site plan that's kind of like what you get from an architect when you get an architectural site plan, but it's not actually, it doesn't show grading and utilities and all the things we actually need to review.
Can't hear you either.
So, so anyway, you'll probably get some additional comments when we get the revised site plan in.
There is one thing here, DPW will not allow a change from master meter unless the building is specifically designed to accommodate individual meters. The only one that, other than that.
What, I'm sorry, can you quit, hold on, what does that mean?
They like individual metering.
They want individual meters.
Individual meters.
Not, not one for each unit, so they're, right now, it's one, I think.
Is that electric, gas? We don't know, any of them, okay.
Probably any of them, water too, I think.
Yeah, they only care about water, yeah.
My client has seen those, and we have no problem with those conditions.
All righty.
Do you want me to comment? Do you want me to comment?
Please.
So I started, so I wasn't sure if you wanted me to keep going. So this house is a qualified pre-existing nonconforming. What's interesting is in twenty sixteen, the law actually was modified for nonconforming pre-existing structures, that if there was, if something existed for a period past the building inspector's ability to enforce that it was or wasn't allowed, it is then deemed a pre-existing nonconforming use. So if it goes past, is it ten years? Ten years, and not enforced, it becomes a pre-ex, legal pre-existing nonconforming use, as of twenty sixteen, which is very different than the past, is it, and Tom has done most of the work on the historic properties and lots and houses, and that you don't have to go back before nineteen forty-three, that something existed before zoning. It's, as of twenty sixteen, if it's existed longer than the enforcement period, it, it can hold the status of legal nonconforming.
Isn't that, isn't that a curative, wasn't that a curative statute? Wasn't it always a curative statute in four, chapter forty?
Forty, section seven.
Section seven, right, that's right.
Section six.
No, so, it was.
Section seven is a.
It was section seven as a curative statute.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
And it always had that provision, but I think it's, I don't know whether it was the wording in, in the, it was an amendment in twenty sixteen that's either been interpreted differently, or maybe there's different language that allows what Kristen just said to you.
It was.
That was always there in sense that this building inspector had X amount of time to do something about it.
Right.
But this kind of grants it the grandfather status from a zoning perspective, so.
What it, what it did is it brought it over from there to the actual nonconforming language, so it's a lot more clear than that in fact.
I think it really wasn't, I, I don't think it had to do with use prior to sixteen, maybe, it was, it was in other words, if they had pulled a permit, if you pulled a permit and you just never had it signed off on, it was ten years. And if you didn't pull a permit, no, it was, it was six years or something, right?
Seven, I reckon.
Seven years, and then if you didn't pull a permit, and it wasn't acted on to stop that, you know, the construction, then it was ten years, right?
The building department was prevented from enforcing, forcing the removal of a, of, of something.
Of construction that had been done, so now sixteen must, now applies it to the, a use that, that doesn't get stopped within that period of time, so.
There's no question in this case of an abandonment of the use.
No, it was, it was, it was.
We don't want to go down that road again, do we?
It was, people were living there right up until the property changed hands around this time last year. So assuming we don't have a year's worth of hearings in front of us, hopefully.
I'm hoping not.
We can get in there in time.
So I just wanted to bring that up because it is new, and it is a new interpretation, and just, it may change how.
Is, is both the residential component and the office component nonconforming under the IG?
No, just the resident.
Just the residential, the IG still, the IG is conforming.
The IG is.
The office is.
The use is conforming, yes.
If they wanted to convert that office into a residential, that would not be a nonconform, that would not be a section six nonconforming.
That, that would, that would be a whole nother variation of the.
Which you're not, you're not going down that road?
No, going down.
Okay.
No, it's, it's perfect for like a real estate office or an accountant or an attorney.
Yeah, so it was three units, it's still three units, it's not.
Three units and an office.
Yeah, so we await the site plan, but I will note, the plan that's in front of you, in terms of the layout of the parking, that goes kind of along the building, is different than that one.
I think that's when BSC kind of got involved, they said this is what they know.
Okay, so I just wanted to note that as we're reviewing it.
This is what is being proposed.
Yeah, I mean, they're trying to keep from, I mean, now the vegetation, there's trees and stuff down here, but the existing hot dog, I guess, is right in here, so they're just trying to make this.
Okay, so the revised plan will show us the actual.
Okay.
Okay. So this is wrong for parking.
Yeah, other.
Other than parking goes, yes.
Other than that, the addition, nine hundred and fifty square feet?
Yeah, roughly.
Square foot addition, you have to make the case that's substantially not more detrimental to the existing nonconforming three family with an office. We did have a conversation really early on, I think even before this buyer bought it, about someone wanting to come in and knocking down the structure and building, three family structure, which we're, we're not favorable to, because we wanted to keep the structure. So I think, just in general, for the interest we've had in the past, that this proposal is one of the better proposals, to preserve the building and preserve the look of it from the front, that, that most of the building is in the back, so, so it'll kind of, it'll look better than it does now, but it'll be maintained along the front. Otherwise, I'm sure we'll have more comments when we get the site plan, but that's all for now.
All righty, Joe, you want to start?
So, just two questions, one, so the, so I assume the outside will be done as well? They're going to be doing the out, doing siding and stuff on it, or?
I don't know exactly what they're doing to the, I mean, they're going to do something, I, I don't know if they're going to put siding on it or just scrape and paint.
Right.
But they will, they're going to improve it.
Okay.
Client will be here next time, so you'll get a better idea on that.
I only ask that if siding is done, it's not vinyl siding or something, then it's done, you know, in.
She's looking to restore it as best she can, so I, I'm sure she doesn't want to put.
Right. And then the other thing is, maybe, is there any landscape plan there, or are they going to be doing any trees or anything around there? It'd be nice to have some trees.
I'm looking at this, I'm sure. When you get the site plan, there's a, just a, it'll show where the green space is going to be, I think they're, it's going to be mostly where, the way it is now, but they're going to obviously improve it and put new sod in, plantings and things of that nature. They're trying to keep it in the same status as it is now, as far as where the hot dog is now, with the grass areas.
Maybe if they could put a couple of trees where the green space is, that would be nice, just to give it a little bit of, you know, as they get older, as the trees mature, that'll, it'll give it a whole different feel down there, you know? But that's great, I appreciate the fact that they want to keep up, keep the, the building intact and not, and not take that down, so.
Barbara?
I just, I think you said that the Historical Commission was already aware of these changes, and so I would just ask that you can have your client consult with them about any exterior changes, especially to the front facade, but other than that, I'm very pleased that it's going to remain in a similar condition. It looks good to me.
You guys need to speak up to.
To that point, Mr. Trudeau is here from the Historical Commission, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I was here basically to observe and to report back as to the, the finding. I was unable, I was called away on a family matter, so I was unable to hear Tom's presentation last week, but I do have a copy of the floor plans and the elevation of the building, and we are pleased to see that the historical character is being maintained in the plans that we've seen. As you know, that the property's been subdivided into two sections, and right now, we're looking at a public hearing next Tuesday for a demolition delay on these, part, part that was one twenty-eight electric. There is a barn in there, which dates back to eighteen twenty, so we're not hopeful about that, I understand that it's in very rough condition, but the house itself is in good condition, considering how many, how many failures we've had lately, one twenty-one Lexington Street, for example, we're hoping to get a win out of this one and not go through the whole process again. I think I could say that if this building that we're discussing tonight did come up for a demo, a demo delay would be a dead certainty, and we'd have to go through that again, we'd really rather not, we'd like to see this building maintained, the changes that are proposed seem minor from the historic prospects. So we'd like to see this, uh, this building stay. The Reed Ham Works is, of course, an important part of Burlington's history. And we'd like to keep as much of it intact as we can.
Thank you. Paul?
No. Beautiful, but I kind of viewed it as when the, when the barn and so forth were next to it, it always looked like a, an agricultural scene where there was a nice old house like that that, you know, half a dozen people, family lived in, in the nice barn next to it. Another, it's nice. And I agree with Mike, they got a, it looks like they got a win out of this one, yes.
Harold?
I don't have any questions at this time. Um, I do agree with everybody else. I'm happy to see that the main, the house is gonna stay pretty much as it is. Be updated. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, a couple of things. I agree with Joe that we, we've got to, we've got to do some, uh, you know, some of the front there with, uh, with, with some trees or something like that. I, I, I would like to go by there again to check out the curb cuts and, and how that's gonna be addressed and see what it's currently looking like today. And just a question to the applicant. Has this always been a resident, as far as you know? How long has that been? Has it been residence in there for?
Research that was submitted to the building department traced it back to, um, in the mid, mid nineteen hundreds that it's been residence as well. I mean, it was built in 1820 as a residence, I'm sure, back at that time. At, at, at some point, it, you know, became a professional office downstairs.
Yeah, I'm just trying to, trying to get the, when, when it changed or if it changed, because with the, with the antenna back there, it was presented to the Board of Appeals at the time that there, that was not a residence there. So that was in the overlay. Um, so they said absolutely no one lived there, so, um, kind of information we got at that time.
In reading the documentation that was submitted to the building department last year by the, by the previous owner, they traced, and they had copies of, uh, utility bills and, and records from the, the town clerk and things of that nature, where it was a three-family use back into the fifties. That's as far back as they could go. In fact, they said they found some evidence that it had been a four-family at one point, but, um, they could, they could only establish a three. So they, they-
Can't hear you.
They, they submitted evidence at least back into the, the late nineteen fifties that there were three families there in addition to the, the dentist's office. I don't know how far back beyond that.
Yeah.
Okay, so this would probably be, I don't know, when they put the antenna up to 2,000 timeframe, maybe, if that's right? So there was, there was, it was, it was stated that there was no one living there because they couldn't put the antenna there if they had residents in that building because it was in the overlay district.
Were you talking the cell phone antenna?
That's correct, yeah. So now that that's there and there's residents there, does, does that kind of, you know, with the folks that live there now, do they, will they know that they're in the, the cell phone district? I mean, they're gonna be close to that antenna versus the intent of that was that you don't have residents that close to the antenna. So, just whatever, whatever comes to that, I just want to-
That's a-
And-
Good question. I don't have an answer. I'm not sure.
So, the other, the other thought I had was, you know, the historic nature of the building. And maybe I missed it. Is there anything specific associated with the ham works? Or where I'm thinking is we, like, 121 Lexington Street is, is there an opportunity to put a plaque to note something there? Or do you, is there anyone, uh, from Burlington's history standpoint that had lived there at one time?
If there are, and I'm not aware of that, but if there are and the historic commission wants to put a plaque of some sort, memorializing, that's not a problem.
Maybe I can bring up the, the representative from the historic commission to, to comment on that.
If I, if I may just-
The Reed Ham, is this on? The Reed Ham Works, uh, really represents the, uh, agricultural industry that was Burlington up until, uh, the introduction of Route 128. This was farmland. Uh, the farming community is pretty well gone. The Reed Ham Works was a major industry here in town. And, uh, we have many, uh, I'm trying to think of the appropriate word, uh, instances showing this, uh, this industry in the archives. Uh, downstairs, for example, is a, uh, chalk and, uh, charcoal painting of the works by John Franklin Gilman from about eighteen, he was working around here about 1880. So, uh, yes, from that time forward, we have many, uh, many things showing the Reed Ham Works specifically as being a major portion of, uh, Burlington's agricultural history.
So I, I know the building next door, you know, if it's something that they made for something, but if it was in, if there's like a plaque or bronze with, with that painting embossed on it or something like that, and I know there's money available from the, from the art, uh, you know, the, the sculpture folks, maybe that's something that goes in front of the historic-looking building versus whatever's gonna happen next door, which is not gonna be historic-looking.
That was what I was gonna mention. I was thinking, the meeting that we had regarding the building going in the corner of Chestnut, they said they were gonna do something historic.
Yeah.
And I don't know if the historical commission, maybe-
Barbara raised that question.
Would it be more appropriate in front of the building versus in the other one?
What we discussed at the subcommittee meeting was the possibility of two things. One, a plaque. And at the time, we were thinking of it at the site where the barn was, but I'm perfectly, um, I, I think it's a great idea to perhaps put it here because this is a, an historic, historic building and the other one will be demolished. We also discussed with the applicant of the other property a donation to the Sculpture Park Committee for a sculpture that would be honoring Burlington's agricultural past, but not perhaps on that, in that location perhaps, to be located somewhere else. None of that's decided, but the, the applicant was very open to the idea.
Great, thank you. And I'd just be interested in the, the revised parking plan. I, I see that there is foliage on the left-hand side where this is proposed, what we see. And I'm, and I'd prefer that versus any parking in the front, to be honest with you. But, um, but if you can make that up, you, if you, if you have to remove those mature trees, but then in the front, uh, you make up for that with the parking on the side and then you put, you know, uh, some trees in the front that will grow over time. I might be more inclined for that versus just having that bare pavement in front of the house. Just my personal opinion. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. You, you got that, Tom?
Yeah, I, we're flexible either way.
Ernie?
I think I'm all set, Mr. Chairman. Basically, everything has been said. With the exception of, why is this IG? I mean, is this a spot that we want to rezon to RO or?
It may have been rezoned as part of the 0128 electric. I'm not sure.
Does it, is there a limit right there, Kristen?
The limit's right there, the actual, the, the property next door where the Ham Works was and the cell towers on the back of that site is RO. Only the front of it. It was back in the days when we would do rezonings, like, a hundred feet back from the edge of Cambridge Street, we rezone X, you know? We have a lot of those on Wind Street and parts of, um, Cambridge Street. Absolutely, though. And there's a, and even Wilmington Road, there's some random IG that we've talked for a long time. Should it be, you know, maybe not RO, but at least neighborhood business? Or, you know, IG just seems like the wrong-
Yeah, I mean, nobody's, right.
Kind of industrial type. But it's the remnant of these older historical industrial places that existed in Burlington. So, um, the answer is yes, I think we can consider what the right fit is, but it's IG now.
Right, no, I understand.
It's a house now, and it's gonna continue to be a house, so.
It's good. I, I think this is probably the best use of the property as the zoning and everything else exists. But maybe that's something we could put on our list when we have our retreat priority meeting, whatever you want to call it, that we could talk about.
And Kristen is making a note of that.
Thank you. I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone in the audience like to speak on this? Okay.
Hi, I'm Michael Murray. I'm here because my parents are the director butter going towards Bill Ricker. Actually, the only residential director butter right along this property line here. I agree with the comments from the board. I think this is a good project. I just kind of have some questions about, you know, cleaning up the property, which it looks like they're doing, but, um, with being a director butter, we just have some concerns about because this is IG and I know it's non-conforming, but there should be a, a buffer here. And again, this plan shown here is a lot different than the plan that I saw before, so I'm kind of taking this all in right now.
So are we.
Yeah, I understand.
We will not be closing the public hearing, so there will be opportunity to.
So just, you know, the buffer here, which if this is existing parking and they're not really, you know, expanding that, then I don't really have a problem with that intruding into the buffer, you know, being against here. But further back, this is fairly well landscaped, but it's not well maintained. So it's kind of like scrubby looking. They, they say they're gonna clean it out, but if we could have a little bit more of a landscape plan and even a little bit more of a, like a vegetated buffer here to screen, that would be ideal. And the only other comment I have right now without really, you know, seeing any more of a plan is just that we could get detail about like what the sidewalk and curving situation along Cambridge Street would end up being. I'm assuming that they're, I know that there's two, this is like a horseshoe now. So there's two curb cuts, so I'm assuming they're gonna go to the state for a curb cut and they're gonna have to meet the state specs. I would just want to clarify that because the sidewalk situation here isn't, it isn't great. So if they could clean that up while they're doing this, I, I mean, I think in general, it looks like they're gonna clean it up. I think that's great. I just-
What, what is the sidewalk that's out front? What's the sidewalk and the curb? Is it?
It's bituminous. It's all bituminous.
It's all bituminous, okay.
I mean, I don't know if it's even technically a sidewalk as much as it is just a little bit of a raised pavement in those areas. But the, the curbing is definitely bituminous there.
Okay, yeah, so that, that's probably something that we would raise as we raised it with the project next door, that along the front edge to upgrade the, the sidewalk, depending on, especially depending on where the-
I think that would clean that up. The original plan they showed, they showed landscaping there. That would clean that up. That's great. So I think just, you know, just a, a little bit more landscaping in here. There's some nice trees in there. I think that's great. Just a couple more dispersed in the right way, just, especially if the parking changes where the headlights could potentially be shone on, shone onto my parents' property that, you know, either way, we're not really opposed to whatever layout they decide. I think this is better because it's not really changing what's out there and, you know, knocking down the landscaping. But again, just a little screening here and cleaning up the front, I think it's, I think it's great.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, why, why don't you give us a proposal of what you think, because, you know, that's your business to, to what, uh, what you would like to see there as a, you know, as something for discussion?
Sure, yeah, I mean, when I see the new site plan, I'll, you know, I can make some comments on it.
Just a suggestion.
We'll email it to you when we get it.
Yeah, I'll, I can send a couple to Michael and-
Okay.
I, I can have the engineer, I mean, or the, the architect speak with Mike too when it comes time to putting a landscape plan together.
A question that was raised about the setback. What, how does a setback apply in this case?
There is a buffer, the buffer zone requirement on IG property abiding residential-
Is still in place even though it's non-conforming?
Is in place. Uh, it's twenty percent of the depth.
The average depth of the, is-
The depth, so you measured from the, the residential line. So from his parents' property across to the other side of the property, I, I don't know how it's, no, that doesn't have it. But anyways, it's twenty percent-
Is this the lot? It's almost square, it's up to the corner?
A portion of which needs to be left in the natural vegetative state. If it's already encroaching in the buffer, we can't encroach more. But, but part of the findings that you're entertaining is overall, how does this site, how does this site make better and not more detrimental than the existing, um, use and potential non-conformity if, if it's in the buffer? Without, without the site plan that actually has all the measurements on it, it's, it's really hard to determine the compliance. So that's one of the reasons why it's critical to get the site plan before we move forward.
Okay, anyone else in the audience want to speak on this?
I'm Brad Coleman. I live on a, one of the streets in back of this property. It looks like a nice job.
What street is that, sir?
Pardon me?
What street is that?
Phyllis Ave.
Phyllis Ave, okay.
So it looks like a nice proposal. I just have a question. You said that when it was sold last year, it was actually a larger parcel? And then she bought just this house?
This house was, this, it was owned, it was part of the same parcel as the larger building, the 128 electric building on Chestnut.
Oh, oh, it was all one?
It was all one parcel.
One part, okay.
And when the, when the developer bought that, he split this lot off and sold it to my client.
Oh.
And he kept the other one and he's doing whatever he's doing with that.
Oh, okay. All right, so it's still part of the-
So for, for a long time, it was part of that larger parcel.
Right, right. I understand. Okay, great. Thank you. That's all.
Anyone else like to speak on this matter? Okay, so we're going to get updated for complete plans. You've heard the comments. Uh, you'll be discussing it with your client. And any questions go up, you'll deal with staff and your client will be available on April 4th. That's our next meeting, yes.
Would you like a motion? Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to continue this matter to the planning board meeting of April 4th, 2019.
Second.
It's been moved in second at all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained. Seven zero zero to continue to April 4th. Okay, continued public hearing. Application for approval of a definitive subdivision plan, 108 Muller Road. Edward and Yelena Ivitskaya, applicant.
Good evening again, Mr. Chairman, Thomas Murphy for the applicant. Mark Petro is here with the, amongst the applicants.
Good evening.
Subdivision plan, as you might recall, 108 Muller Road. It's about a two hundred and fifty, forty thousand dollar, thousands.
Yeah, I don't know what's going on with the acoustic chairman and stuff.
I'll use the hand one. As the board might recall, we were here two meetings ago. Mr. Petro's in-laws own a two hundred and thirty thousand odd square foot parcel of land up off of Muller Road, 108 Muller Road. They're looking to subdivide that into two lots, allowing Mark and his wife to build a new home. They've appeared before the Board of Appeals back in the fall, got a variance for the frontage. They're before this board on a sub, on a subdivision plan, not an A and R plan because they have less than a hundred foot of frontage on, on their lot. When we were here two meetings ago and we presented the, um, the scenario a little bit, and if you recall, the major discussion was about the, the access. There's a fifteen-foot driveway that comes off of Muller Road. This house here uses that driveway. And then Mr. Petro's in-laws live right down here. So there are currently two homes that use this long driveway. The third home, as proposed, will be built right here in the yellow, on the yellow lot. So there would now be three houses using this driveway from Muller Road back out to here. There was concern expressed both from the fire department and their comments and from some members of the board about being able, having three families using this road. It's not, it's not an ideal situation, which I, I don't disagree with. As I mentioned back at the time, this right-of-way in easement goes all the way through to Cormier Road, which is over here. My client also has the ability, this, this, the current driveway ends right about here. This is where his in-law's house is, to extend the driveway all the way out to Cormier. They have a forty-foot right-of-way that was granted, or they retained in easements, not these people, but the prior owners. So they have forty feet right-of-way to, to construct a driveway out to Cormier as an option. If the board felt that this wasn't a good idea to put another house on this right-of-way. We met today with the, um, after the last meeting, I was talking to staff and, and the consensus was there was some concern amongst the board about using this. So we've enhanced this, the original plan with this plan showing the, the right-of-way continuing on out to Cormier where it would be laid out. We met today with, in a subcommittee, um, with, uh, the fire department and the police department and Josh and Liz were there as well, just to kind of talk about it. And I'm sure they'll fill you in. I don't know if they filed their report yet, but the gist of the conversation was in talking to Captain Hanifin and, um, Jerry McDonough for the police department. They were concerned about doing this because they were afraid it was gonna become a, a cut-through. Especially if this was a wider right-of-way than the current one is. They were afraid it's gonna invite people to, to do it. And, and, and Captain Hanifin said that even though this is not ideal, he, he wasn't, he didn't think one extra house was going to overly burden it. He says it's a, not a great situation, but it is what it is. And he thought with the- And he thought with the, uh, this gray area here is gonna be a driveway. This could be used as a T-turnaround if a fire truck had to go in that way, and there's also some paved area right in here. So, long and short of it was, and was, I'm here before you as, on our second hearing, but the consensus that I took out of this meeting today was the two safety departments would prefer to leave this right-of-way the way it is and allow the new house to utilize that right-of-way. In their opinion, neither one's a great solution, but this was the better solution from their perspective, because they just foresaw all sorts of problems if this became a cut-through. Don't worry about this.
Does the first house that you hit have rights to the easement going out to Cormier?
It does.
And so the yellow and the green also have rights?
As does this house here, even though they don't use this right-of-way.
So when the yellow portion, I presume, is gonna be deeded out?
Correct.
Uh, I would like to be sure that that deed also held rights to the Cormier access should sometime in the future it be appropriate to do.
Yep.
So you'd be sure that's included in the deed?
That'll be included in the deed, it's already, it's in the deed to this whole space, so it'll carry through, that'll carry through.
But, you know, if, if you're not careful, that deed can be written in.
No, you're right, you're right.
I, I just wanna make sure they carry it.
One other thing that, that I'll just mention that the fire department asked for, my client was fine with. The nearest fire hydrant is out here in Cormier Road. So he asked us to, to bring a fire hydrant in here. He said, you know, if they could get trucks in and out of there, but the other fire hydrant's back here, it's about 800-foot run, so we would agree.
He specify the diameter of the pipe coming into that hydrant?
Uh, he's gonna give us all that information, we told him we would do it, he'll, he'll let us know what it is. I don't know if his, if his reports come in yet, but we will bring a, there's gonna be a water line coming to the new house, so they dig in the trench anyway, so they'll, they'll put the, put whatever's required for the fire hydrant as well. And he, he suggested that be brought out to this area someplace.
So the plan as proposed is now, and the, the town has the plan as to what you're proposing now?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay. So we're still, what are we waiting for?
Well, the, you'll, you'll have the plan as far as what, what I don't have is what the fire department is specifically requesting. But we, we agreed to adopt the conditions that we talked about that I anticipate him putting into his comments. I don't know if they've come in yet.
We just got those late today.
Do have some comments, um, so the addition of the fire hydrant and then potentially any modification to the drive where they can turn around. After that discussion, we had another meeting the Board of Health happened to be at, and Christine Mathis has been asking me continually if there are any changes, she wants to make sure the Board of Health sees them, so.
When do they meet next?
They'll meet opposite us, so probably next Thursday.
They'll meet on Tuesdays.
Conservation to meet next Thursday.
Conservation opposite us, they may meet next Tuesday.
They've seen this plan.
They've seen.
They've already commented on it, and if we.
They've seen this plan, she's just.
If we revert back to the original plan, that's the one that they've already commented on.
She just asked me today to make sure that we understand the plan changes, and she'd like to see them before we vote.
All right, so we do have some comments here, why don't we get those on the record?
Yeah.
Okay. There's new comment from the fire department, which covers what Tom was saying. Currently, the existing address at 106 and 108 Muller Road, you'll utilize the 15-foot right-of-way as will the proposed subdivision. This creates challenges for the emergency response for the fire department. The narrow road width and setback from Muller Road greatly prohibits property, proper emergency vehicle access as well as placement, even in ideal weather conditions. In addition, securing a water supply is further complication, complicated due to setbacks and apparatus limitations. I am aware that the applicant has limited ability to improve these conditions, and the addition of one residence will not make the current situation substantially worse. With the following improvements, I will not object to the proposed subdivision. Installation of a fire hydrant adjacent, adjacent to the new subdivided lot, location will, to be approved by the fire department. Improved signage at the entrance to the 15-foot right-of-way to better identify access to these addresses. Then, um.
Anything else new?
Conservation.
Conservation says that development of the new lot will require filing with Conservation Commission as there are wetlands in the area.
Right, we've already, Mary Trudeau's gonna handle that part of it, we just kinda wait till we get through here so she knows what to be asking for. So we, clearly we have to go through them, there's a lot of wetlands in the area.
There was another thing from the fire department earlier, and it said this street should have another name other than Muller Road to eliminate confusion regarding its addresses.
I think, I think his, I think his, yeah, right, his newer comments, I think supersede his prior comments.
What he asked us to do, 104 Muller Road is this house right here, and 106 is this one way back here. And he said people driving along, if you don't see this driveway, you keep going looking for six, so he would like enhanced signage out here. And this number will probably have to be 104R, or the building department will, will assign that, but, so we'll have a sign readily visible from somebody going along Muller Road, that if you're looking for 108 Muller Road or 106R Muller Road, turn here. That's, um, the fire department's concerned, you know, they, they went out to find it today, and they, they're looking for 108, they went, went by 104 here and, and just kept going, 106.
The mailbox is out on this, on Muller Road?
There are mailboxes out on Muller Road, so they're just, we're gonna, we'll, we'll do whatever everybody thinks we have to do just to make that more visible, to let people know that this is where you turn to get to these two houses.
So mail is delivered out on Muller Road?
Out on Muller Road.
That's an opportunity to enhance the identification, I think.
Exactly, exactly.
Without making it ugly.
And, and we told them we'd work with them or staff or, you know, design it however everybody feels is appropriate.
There's some new ones from DPW, and was there, was there anything new in DPW? Cause it said, see comments.
They're probably pretty standard for the, you know, a new.
Okay, thank you.
All righty, so what are we waiting for?
I hadn't, I, I didn't know whether tonight you'd have the, the fire department's updated comments or not.
So you've not had a chance to.
I talked to Tom at 4:45, we didn't have them at that point.
Okay.
Um, they did just come in, so we haven't incorporated them into anything yet. Um, the, the Board of Health asked us to, if there was changes, because they weren't at the meeting today, to understand what they were before we voted.
Okay.
And then, just to see if you guys had any other comments, because we were kind of heading in a different direction, knowing police and fire were not favorable at the last meeting, we've since met. And they seem to be, you know, not their favorite, but with some conditions it could work. Because it's one house and only one house, um, I did ask Tom today, it's one house and only one house, and you're sure it's only gonna be one house? Cause as, as we joked, it's not the first time we've had that conversation, so.
Well, that's all this subdivision is calling for, but, you know, that doesn't stop them from coming into subdivision next week.
You're right, I, as a practical matter, there's so much wetlands here, there's very little uplands left that hasn't been, and there's absolutely no frontage, so for somebody to try to subdivide this any further would be. They, I don't think they could even get a variance to get in the door to come to the subdivision.
Was there any condition in the variance to prevent a future effort to get an additional lot?
I don't believe so, no.
They'll come to you, Tom.
Tom, they keep going if they come to me.
Well, this is a subdivision, so we could, we could put a note on the plan. As we should have done on the one off of Francis Wyman.
Would you look into that to see if that's something we can do and should do?
Oh, I think you absolutely, and the waivers need to call out, this is one lot and only one lot, and that there are concerns about access, but because it's one lot, just for the reasons the fire department.
That deals with that, but, you know, the question is, you know, the, the fire department was saying, well, one additional house is not a problem, but what would they have said if there's two houses or three houses? And could they commit with a few?
They said, they would say no, and they said that today, so.
So do we somehow want to put something to give notice or to the extent possible, prevent them from coming in for yet another lot?
Well, I, I mean, if something did happen, it would be right back here. So, I mean, it's not as if we don't have control over that eventuality, but you don't, you also don't wanna start in a place to say, yeah, it's all right, it's all right, but, so therefore you do wanna check what is the actual likelihood.
Look into what the options are, what's appropriate, uh, you know. Discuss it with the applicant's counsel and fire, you know, so let's make sure that we try to anticipate any future problems and prevent problems that we don't want.
This is the last house and that's it.
Well, that was said the last time too, who knows?
Yeah, but we didn't say it in two places. Say in the decision and on the plan, if you remember.
On the pla, yeah, as we've learned, on, a note on the plan.
Yes, okay, all righty.
Judge said anyways.
Yeah, that's what the judge said.
Where, where are we here, folks?
I, I have a comment I'd like to make.
Sure, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Not, this is not for Tom, but I wanna make sure that our official meeting minutes and record reflect the fact that the police and the fire have approved this. They are always telling us that they do not like these long shared driveways, and now that they've approved it, we're, we really can't do anything about it, but I anticipate in 10, 15, 20 years, when ownership of these properties changes and the police start getting calls from people fighting over the driveway, no one's gonna remember this meeting and they're gonna blame us. So I want it in our record.
Oh, so we're gonna get it, we're gonna get a plaque put on the beginning, add a plaque up to the mailbox.
They didn't approve it if the language.
The language is not saying approved.
They didn't say approve, but if they don't object, it's kind of difficult for us, our hands are tied now, I think.
Is it? Could we get stronger language from the fire department, I guess?
I don't think so.
Are our hands tied if they say not disapproved?
No, you, you have, the questions you have on subdivisions are road construction and access. So it, and that's why, so it's road construction, and that's why you're talking about access. If there's not road construction, it's up to the planning board to determine, is there sufficient access to serve this proposed lot? I mean.
Well, there is access, the question is, is it sufficient, and who makes the determination whether it is sufficient and sufficient for what purposes?
With public safety comments in hand that say they're not favorable, I think there's an obvious course that the planning board needs to take. When there's comments that say, maybe it's okay, I think you still have some discretion to, to determine what, if the access is feasible.
I read it more as not maybe it's okay, but begrudgingly agree is kind of what it sounded like.
A quote from our meeting, a quote of our meeting this morning was, does not object.
Does not object.
I will not.
Let's, let's read what they wrote, which is the record. Currently, the existing address at 106 and 108 Muller Road utilizes the 15-foot right-of-way, as will the proposed subdivision. This creates challenges for emergency responses for the fire department. The narrow road width and setback from Muller Road greatly prohibits proper emergency vehicle access as well as placement, even in ideal weather conditions. In addition, securing a water supply is further complicated due to setbacks and apparatus limitations. I am aware that the applicant has limited ability to improve these conditions, and the addition of one residence will not make the current situation substantially worse. With the following improvements, I will not object to the proposed subdivision. Installation of a hydrant and improved signage.
Where was it right back at us?
That doesn't say, yeah, so I think there is, with, with language like that, I think it does allow the planning board, I don't think our hands are tied, Jack, to be honest with you, with, with that type of language, it's not approved.
I, I think they were tied when there was a disapproval, that you had to disapprove, I mean, that you had a disapproval. I mean, if you remember, we had this conversation in 2005 with the house that's accessed off Kelly Farm. It was gonna be accessed off this road, and we were going down a similar path of, it's just one, is it okay, I don't know. You know, it was prob, it was problematic at that time, and we kinda went back and forth, and then it eventually was accessed off Kelly Farm.
That was a shorter, that was a much shorter driveway than this, wasn't it?
No, no, it's, it's the, see the yellow lot?
Same road.
It's the white lot.
That was this house right here.
That was first proposed to be accessed off this drive.
But then it went out to Kelly Farm.
Kelly Farm happened to be under construction at the same time, and Gary Reubing ended up buying that lot, and as he developed Kelly Farm, so it just all worked. And then there was no question about access anymore, cause Kelly Farm was a brand-new subdivision road. But we were having similar conversations then about that lot, and that was the one more lot accessed off the road, similar to this lot. So, um, I think it's fair to have this debate, and I think, I mean, just the question of that member Raymond brought up at the last meeting and asked pointedly, can two cars pass on the road?
The answer is no.
You know, they kind of give, they deal with it, but how do they deal? I mean, is there room to pull over enough so a car can, I mean, obviously if the FedEx truck's humming down, it's gonna be hard, but can two cars pass? That's the question, but if you can prove that sufficiently people could go both ways, so you're not, as, as member Raymond said, doesn't wanna back up the 800 feet, or how, not 800, 500? 800, 800 feet, um, you know, but these are questions I think we should be asking the applicant to demonstrate that it's possible, that it's not a huge burden and a.
I guess the, my first answer to that is they've been doing it for 12 years or however long both of these houses are here, so, so clearly, I haven't heard of any accidents coming in and out. There might be parts of the driveway where you can't do that, there might be others where there's a shoulder that you can do that. I, I don't know it well enough, but the point is, it's been working for 12 or 15 years. But to remember Gaffney's point, which is, if this board would determine that this is not sufficient access, I would submit to you, which is this part of the plan, we've got a 40-foot right-of-way out to Cormier Road. We, we could put a road wider than Cambridge Street out there, so it's not a question of not being able to get sufficient access so that a reasonable person would say, yeah, that's sufficient to access a house. It's, as we discussed this morning with the, with the, with the fire and, and the police, the, uh, the unintended consequences of something like that is something to be considered. If you, nobody's gonna argue with a 15-foot driveway is not, it's not ideal, I'm not gonna suggest that it isn't. But a 15-foot driveway going into a 22-foot driveway going out to Cormier Road, and at 5 o'clock with traffic backed up from Muller Road, and you live over here and you wanna get down to the mall, they're gonna come through there, and that's, that's, that was the police's main concern.
But that's a private way, they can restrict public access, I presume.
You can put a sign up, good luck, you know.
And if Waze has it in their database, where do they go?
Once it's there, it's there, you know, it's like water, water finds low ground.
Yeah, we talked about a barrier between the two last time, so only the first house gets to go to the, the long road, and then you put the other two on the other side.
Can't legally do it.
What, sorry?
Can't legally do it, people, people have rights over this right-of-way, it's like a paper street. People who buy property on a paper street have rights over it, but if nobody wants to lay it out, obviously you can't drive a road down there. As soon as somebody lays it out, then everybody with rights over it can use it, and this is the same theory.
So if you, if you bring the left side not quite up to the right side, so you have a, you have a, a gap there, and they only have rights up to that, to the point, cause you didn't, you've got that other section that's not paved.
Oh, so in other words, what you're saying is those two houses would have to go out that way, and this one house would go out tomorrow.
They get rights today, but it's not finished out the other side.
Well, the, the current pavement comes out to about here.
So if you just brought it up to the yellow house?
Yep.
The house on the yellow lot?
Bring what up?
Access from Cormier.
Access from Cormier.
The access from Cormier would come out here and ultimately come over to here.
Right.
But once it gets to here, it, it joins the existing right-of-way that's paved.
But it wouldn't have to go all the way through, you could, you could stop it.
It goes through now.
Up to that house, you could bring it up to that house.
Bring what up?
It already goes past that house, Barbara.
I understand that, what I'm saying is.
To here.
Right, but the roadway, you could have the, the driveway that goes up to that first house on the left, right? End it right there, where your finger is.
But you can't.
And those two houses go out Cormier.
Both houses have.
Can't because the other people have these rights.
Houses have rights to use this 15-foot right-of-way all the way out to Cormier Road.
Which houses do?
All of them.
All of them.
This one, this one, uh, these two down here. They all come out of the same chain of title, back to the, the right-of-way was created like in 1906.
They have a right-of-way to that 15-foot driveway?
Yep, it was in all, it was all the deeds going here, and then it, as, as the land got subdivided, it falls through.
Yeah, but doesn't.
You can't just arbitrarily block it.
But today they have access, all, you're saying that they go all the way through to Cormier, they have, all have that access, right?
But it's a legal right-of-way.
They all have access to do it, but there's no reason to use it, cause it doesn't go all the way through.
So, so I think to, to Barbara's point is that there, then, if we're gonna. So, so I think to, to Barbara's point is that there, then, if we're going to approve this, there'd be no reason to use that middle section. But it'd still be there, they could walk it, right, they have access to it, but they don't have to drive it.
They have access to it.
Yeah, like they have access to Cormier.
And once it's laid out, if you start to block it, they, they have the right to say you can't do that. It's like, again, using the paper street as, as, as a example, you can't pave your papers, paper street and then you don't like people using it, so you put a, you rip up the pavement in the middle.
I'm not saying block it, but I'm saying not, you know, now you're going to tear up that section of it, so basically you're saying you're paving up to here and guess what, you're not paving to here.
You have a strip of grass, basically.
Something like that, yeah.
Right, and I think what Tom is saying is that we are not allowed to do that.
It's already paved.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, we aren't.
Okay.
It's already paved.
Yeah, and I, I, I can't quote the section, I, I think, I think I'd have to agree with Tom that it's hard to put the genie back in the bottle once it's paved because of those rights, but I can check with council before our next meeting to get a little bit better, more defined.
They, they could refuse to maintain it in a matter of time, it would.
What if the neighbors agreed to the plan because they don't want that to be a cut through?
They won't, don't want it to what?
None of the neighbors are going to want that to become a cut through from Cormier to Muller. They might agree to tear up the pavement there and have half of them go out to Muller and the other ones go out to Cormier because it's to their benefit for this not to be a cut through.
You've got to remember another thing, there's, there's a house on each side of where it accesses onto Cormier Road. And if it was me and I had access to that whole strip there, I wouldn't want it to go through, so I would, I would, I wouldn't want my lien to be altered.
I understand that, but they don't have a choice about that.
I wouldn't agree to anything that would, that would take away my, what I thought was my lawn.
Right, but, but actually the question before you, Ernie, wouldn't be, should we build this road in between your house and your neighbor? It would be more like, okay, we're building this road in between your house and your neighbor, we can have it go all the way through and then people are going to turn at your house and go to Muller, or we can stop it halfway, so it wouldn't become a cut through.
I could be wrong, but don't all the people that have access to the right of way have to approve any improvements on it?
That's what I'm saying, maybe they would approve it.
They would, they don't have to approve, they have benefit of any improvements that are made to it. They don't have to approve of it, but they're, they're more than happy to use it once somebody else does the work. What we're talking about is taking their rights away from them.
Yeah.
And that's a different story. And, and the other practical problem, just thinking about this, we'd have to do title exams on an awful lot of properties because frankly, I, standing here now, I, I don't know how much of this has been, how much, how much this actually applies to. Because this was a large parcel of land at one point, was it all Kelly Farm, it might have been, I don't, I don't know. All the stuff down here, several places that go all the way down there, I don't know. So there'd be a lot of, it would be a very difficult thing to pin down as to what doors we have to knock on.
And if, if we're thinking about safety, there's one other thing that we might want to consider is that the fire department says that right now with that one existing house there, one existing house or two?
Two.
Two existing houses there, they'll, they'll have a tough time servicing it anyways. And not only that, but they have to pull eight hundred feet of hose down the road.
Right.
If they, if they follow through with this, I'm not really, I'm just trying to objectively look at it, that they would have a hydrant that would service those three houses.
Right, but they could still do that if they were accessing from Cormier, they could still put the hydrant there.
They're going to do it anyway.
Oh, no, I, I agree, I agree, right, but if, if our problem is safety concerns, then, okay.
Yeah, yes, Paul.
It's interesting that, I remember first seeing the fire truck, the ladder truck. I couldn't believe it, I was coming in and I'm trying to think, it was Captain Cotton was there and he's a huge vehicle and I said, what's that? And he says, that's going to be the new ladder truck if we buy it. I said, that thing must be going to cost a half a million. He says, you're halfway there.
Yeah, right.
And, and they take it everywhere, they love to, they love to drive that thing around, but I mean, you know, the, that, I'm, I'm picturing that ladder truck coming down there and by the way, who plows there? Does the town plow that?
Oh, they do.
It's private, it's, it's private, they, they plow it themselves.
But you don't have to, if you don't want to. You've got to, yeah, you've got to get it out, but you, but you're doing it, do you, are your neighbors going to contribute to you?
Yeah, they do.
Okay, so you kind of have an agreement.
Right.
It's essentially a driver with these ones.
My question is, as far as the fire, fire department people, if I were them, if there was a question, you know, I would say no. And I, I, it seems to me that we're getting an equiv- an equivocation, they're saying, well, we really don't like it, but we don't want to object to it.
Right.
I don't think there's room for them to be a nice guy, not if it's coming to my house. You know, I don't want them to have a question as to whether somebody's coming down the driveway the other way. So that's, you know.
And all it takes, you, you're, you're family.
I would rather, if I lived here, I'd want to go out Cormier.
Yeah.
You know, rather than, rather than going.
Right now, they're family and neighbors that all get along and that's wonderful. But all it takes is when one of those houses turns over, some jerk to move in. It's uncooperative and difficult and the whole system falls apart.
It's happening today. No, it's happening today in town and other places.
Yes, you're right.
Just added one more potential.
One of those people sells their house or gets in a fight with their neighbor over something and.
Or gets a divorce. And it's court gets involved, that makes it even easier.
Should we have a, a site visit or should we just, I mean, this, this is.
If I can just, I'm thinking about this, do you, do you salt the road and so forth so that, like the town does, you know, they put salt and sand and everything?
This is like a glorified driveway, I mean, a lot of us have people that plow our driveway and then.
So if you decide, people talking about divorcing, if you move there, the word begins with S. You know what I mean, they got, they got, they got no, they're, they're, what do they do? Get together and say, okay, he's not there, he's not plowing anymore, now what do we do?
The people who live in the first house could say, well, we're only going to plow out to the, to Muller Road and.
Yeah.
In cases like, sometimes in cases like.
It's not for us to worry about, but it's for them to solve. Our question is, do we feel it's safe to put a house there?
We've, in cases like this, I think on, in some circumstances, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jack, we've asked for homeowners agreements, everybody that has.
Like a homeowners, a tiny homeowners association?
Yeah, not even an association, just an agreement. So at least there's some legal.
There's nothing like that in place now, any type of.
There isn't. Two of the three people on the street, if this were to go through, would be the same family, so I don't think, I don't know, I don't know who the other person is.
We're looking further down.
Same family in perpetuity.
Yeah, we could certainly try to put something together and if everybody's willing to sign it and it would essentially say they share the maintenance, share, share the, you know, the driveway, they agree not to block each other. Agree not to block each other and all that type of stuff, you know, that's.
Yeah, so at least even if there was a problem, they'd have a legal.
I think we've raised some questions and issues, I'm not sure what the solutions are. Maybe you can try to think of some of them before next April fourth, before April fourth.
I certainly will, I mean, to me, it's, and I understand the, the concept of trying to, to break it off. I think legally it, it's going to be a difficult process, frankly, and not, to me, not that realistic. So it's, it's either, in my mind, allow the third house on this right of way, fire department says they're not thrilled about it, but they can live with it, or put a more enhanced driveway out here, but it's going to create a problem.
That's the cut through problem, you mean.
That's the cut through problem. And, and with this board, in this type of a situation, your, your, your main function is making sure there's sufficient access. This is not great access, I give you that. We can certainly provide sufficient access within the forty foot right of way. So it's not a question of, like with Margaret Road, you ultimately said no, which you had the right to do there. Here, we can provide access, but the concern from the fire department and especially the police department was there going to be other repercussions to doing that.
So we kind of have to just pick between the lesser of two evils, do we want this long driveway that has the potential for problems in the future or do we want to create a cut through?
We don't have their coming in.
That is a good way to.
So he was part of the meeting today.
Yeah, I think actually this, it's, when you say it's difficult maybe to figure out that stoppage of payment, but you still have access there, which kind of gives a signal it's not a cut through, I think that's the easier way out, to be honest with you, I think it's possible to do.
But we haven't heard from the police and we originally thought the police were going to be objecting too, but sometimes they're the ones that are called down to settle the disputes between.
He was, someone from, someone from the police department, Jerry Madonna was part of the meeting this morning and he did raise serious concerns about the Cormier cut through as, in conjunction with the fire department.
Comments in hand, I don't think we can move forward yet.
You dug it up and you made it gravel, so they still could pass, but it would be, you know, slow you down and be uncomfortable and not be good.
Yep, exactly.
Can the, would the owner give us permission to take a ride down there and down the driveway?
The application's in front of the planning board?
Part of chapter forty-one, one of the eighty-one subsections tells us we have that authority.
Yeah, if it's, if it's.
Even without asking, we can't be charged with trespassing.
Do have the right to go on the property. But I'm glad you read all the sections.
You don't even have to announce yourself and ask permission.
Mr. Chairman. Just, just a question, and I know, and we've all been around a long time, we say this is going to be the last one of the last one of the last one and typically it's not the case because you get.
It's the last one for now.
And then you get another variance and you know how that goes. So my question is, is who owns the property between 106 and 104?
This area in here, Bill?
Yep.
That's part of this lot up here.
It's part of the 106 lot?
That's part of the 106 lot.
And how, how big is that?
Oh, I'm sorry, strike that, I'm strike that, it's part, it's part of this lot here.
The number ten lot?
The number, yeah, number ten on, on Kelly Farm.
The one that accesses to Kelly Farm, yes.
That's a long lot that opens up into a T at the end.
Number ten only shows, it looks like it's only got, it's a very short lot, maybe I'm looking at the wrong thing here.
Number ten?
It says, it's got the, the frontage, it's got forty-six on the front of Kelly, so I, I don't see that as coming back around this way.
The front edge is on Muller.
The front, the frontage is over.
So maybe you can help me out here, is it number twelve lot then you're telling me? Number, number ten looks like it's closed.
So ten has rights over that.
So ten comes this way. So the ten comes, like, comes this way.
And then down.
And then ten owns this. Who owns, I'm asking who owns this?
Oh, okay. That's, oh, that's part of the 106.
He's talking about this, this pace, right there, that, that area between 106 and.
106, 106's lot, I believe comes like this. And, and there's a, I think it, 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 it mutton chops out to Muller Road. It goes like this and then opens up.
So it has their own frontage.
So this is, all this land here is owned by 106.
How big is that property, the 106 property?
There's a line, there's a line like right here, I think that's the edge of the, between 104 and 106.
How, how big in acreage is 106's property?
Could they put another house in?
Yeah, could they put another house in?
Is it big enough to do that?
I don't, I don't remember.
We could, we could look it up.
I guess the question that's being asked is, could we investigate, what is the potential of yet another house lot?
Yeah, I mean, is the, the Board of Appeals changes over time or doesn't?
Yep.
And the planning board changes over time, so, you know, the whole thing about the last of the last, I'm looking for kind of, I look at the long game.
Yep.
So I, just to, just to.
I think Tom may have something for you there.
If you take a look at that green line on the right.
Yep. Understand, yeah, and the problem with that is you get two cars there, then you're in heavy weather, so I, I understand.
Yeah, we could, we could look at that before, between the next meeting and we could figure that out.
What the size of the 106 lot is.
Send the information out well before the meeting, so you won't be trying to figure it out at the meeting.
It's a weird lot in the.
So I, I guess just for transparency, we're uncurrently on, I, I would be in favor of that right hand side Cormier. It is what it is with regards to the neighbors, Ernie, and you may be, with seeing these in town, you know, I look at one versus the other and the fence on either side.
Six, one half dozen of the other end.
I would say, I'm not six, one half dozen, I'm going to.
No, I mean, you're, you're that.
Okay, we've got a couple of meetings going on here, let's try and get this thing back to.
So just to let you know, Mr. Chairman, that's where I'm currently sitting.
All righty, so you've been listening to both, all three meetings at once, so you know exactly what you got, your work cut out for you to be.
Yeah, I, well, I mean, to be honest, I think there are two options. If there's more information that somebody wants me to get, I'll, I'll talk to Kristen and she'll give me a list or whatever.
I'm not sure what was clear to you.
I, I don't, I, I know there's concern about using the right of way and I know there's also concern about making it a throughway and there are some options about ways of to avoid that, which I'm not sure legally we can do. So, but I'm not sure there's any other information that I can give you that you need from me that's going to change what the three options are.
Well, the, the last bit of information we're looking for is, what is the potential for any new lot being created which would also be looking for access along that fifteen foot right of way?
In my opinion, zero percent chance of that ever happening, but.
We'll tickle it.
Yeah, we'll see, if, if there's a piece of land that's forty thousand square feet facing it and they could subdivide it and with a variance, they can do it for even less.
No, I, I understand, but keep in mind, this is not a public way, so you need frontage on Muller Road.
Oh, that's right.
Or Cormier Road, but that's way over there. So even if you would, to gerrymander out twenty thousand square feet in here someplace, there's no frontage. You've got to come off of Muller Road.
Stranger things have happened. And you're usually called to represent them.
Just a coincidence.
All right.
Very good.
All right, okay. Yes, there's a public hearing, but there's nobody else here to.
The motion is to continue.
That's the, yeah, because we, we still haven't heard from the police and the Board of Health said they wanted to weigh in if there was something changed, so we're, we're still waiting for more information.
Bill can have it, it's fine.
All right, so Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to continue this matter to the planning board meeting every April fourth, 2019.
Second.
Been moved in second, it's all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, seven, zero, zero. Wasn't that fun? All right. We've got meeting minutes of December sixth, January third, January seventeenth, has everyone had a chance to look them over?
Unfortunately, I have not.
I have not.
I have not either.
So I don't think.
You have?
I have.
I have?
I have.
That's three?
Oh, so close.
Okay.
Sorry, sorry.
But I will make the edits from Jack and Carol, so just.
Okay.
And then will you send them out again?
Discussion matters, sixty-one Center Street.
Hold on, Jack, just in relation to the minutes, the first one, the sixth, December sixth?
Yes.
It has me coming at seven fifteen, but it has a seven oh vote prior to that on an A and N.
So fix that, okay.
You were here in spirit.
He was watching it on his phone.
That's right.
All right, so other matters, discussion. There is a letter in the front.
There's one thing first.
By me?
The Board of Selectmen have asked for members from this board to be on a sixty-one Center Street Subcommittee for two members of this board. We can invite more of it.
Interested member or members, which, how many do they want?
They want two members.
Okay.
One, they did request at least one of the members be either Bill or Joe.
All right.
And then the other, it's, it's up to you guys, but they, just to make sure that we incorporated the discussion that we've been having.
Among Bill and Joe, are either, are both of them agreeing to be on that?
I had some discussions, so I need to continue on with the discussions prior to, so before I say yes, I'd like to have a meeting with the.
Okay.
Okay, we'll, we'll let, we'll let you continue that.
Well, I, I, I think they want to get started, so I.
Yeah, I have difficulty making the Subcommittee meeting, so I don't want.
So why don't between the two of you, we'll talk, one of, and figure out which of the two of you, and then.
Here's the plan.
For another, for another member.
Yeah.
Is there anyone else?
From my archives.
Sure, yeah, I think what I'm going to do is try to add that.
Twenty-five.
Kristen, if you need another person, I can do it, if you don't, I would just like to be informed so I can attend.
So the question is, are we going to appoint any members to the committee tonight? It sounds like no.
Well.
Well, it, it sounds like.
I'm gonna go if I'm not, I'd be appointed.
Ernie's volunteering.
I'm volunteering.
Joe or Bill will discuss among themselves and me and choose.
Paul's volunteering.
Yeah, so we can all go, I mean, it's public, it's gonna be a public.
But they want two voting members.
Oh, okay, I understand.
It's gonna be either Bill or Joe.
Right.
And then some.
And Ernie.
Paul and I are just gonna go.
And we can't, Paul, Jack, there's, there is no vote to be taken, because I can't represent the board, you know, I'm just there for input, right?
But the, the committee is going to make decisions, are they not, the Subcommittee?
What good will that do, they gonna come back here?
Yeah, they're gonna put together a presentation for us, I would think.
Well, that's, that's one of the requests, is to, you know, make sure we represent a lot of the conversation, and that's why they asked specifically for.
Well, I already gave this to Josh, that's mine, if I go to the meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
And that was done by DPW, Fort Park.
All right, so, do I have a motion of any kind to appoint?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to appoint.
I talk, it's not a chairman's, pardon me.
Oh.
Okay.
The chairman is giving his prerogative to the board as a whole.
So I'd like to make a motion to appoint Joe or Bill her, and they'll discuss with staff which one, and Ernie, to the sub, the sixty-one Center Street Subcommittee.
Do you have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, seven, zero, zero, you let me know what the decision is, and we'll announce it at the next meeting.
And we'll, we'll let the whole entire board know of any, you know, public meeting on the matter.
Thank you. One sixty Cambridge Street letter, at the front cover you have a copy of a letter, and Kristen will explain what's going on here.
Um, we've just been asked to confirm the process that we went through.
This has got to do with the residential units at Building Nineteen.
At our meeting. Building Nineteen, our, um, the decision references the bylaw as well as references the affordable, to require a memorandum of understanding with the affordable housing, no, the Housing Partnership.
Thank you.
Who would discuss the affordable housing agreement. This letter simply says that at the Planning Board meeting of March twenty-first, regarding the affordable residential units within the project at one sixty Cambridge Street, in this sentence, a run-on sentence, and I'll fix it, but as confirmed agreement with the discussion at the Housing Partnership, an affordable housing agreement dated July seventeen, twenty seventeen, outlining the two point nine units, we note that the, pursuant to the zoning bylaw and affected in the, at the time of permitting and construction, the value is determined by the Town Assessor, they are currently trying to figure out that value, right now, using a number of different ways to determine valuations, this project. There was a discussion and some sort of an assumption when it went through our process that it would be similar to the Burlington Heights project and other town center projects where they were all condo, it's being offered as a rental project right now, so it's not as cut and dry to find that valuation, and so anyway, that's underway right now to figure out the payment required for the remainder units as well as potential negotiation as to, if they were going to offer a third unit as affordable negotiation to that end, so this is just stating that we support the efforts, support the, the Housing Partnership, Assessor and Town Administration to further the affordable housing efforts to try to get as many units as possible here and in Burlington overall.
So this is saying, if we agree, the Planning Board confirmed agreement with the discussion at the Housing Partnership and Affordable Housing dated July seventeen, outlining two, outlining two point nine units, what, what is the subject or the, of that discussion, what, what is, what was, what was said in that discussion, if we're confirming it, we should put in, you know, what the result of or the summary of that discussion, so.
Okay.
In a more particular language, what is it we're being asked to confirm?
I agree, 'cause I'm, I'm a little confused by that, and I am hesitant, because at our meeting, we said three units. When we, when we, when this applicant was before us, we said three units, they said yes, so now it's two point nine, and I'm not sure it's worth fighting over, because I personally think that we should just pay them the ten percent to get the third unit, but I understand that the valuation changes when we're paying them versus them paying us.
That, that's why I wanna break.
That's part of the discussion.
Yes.
But that's why I want to.
Right, I don't really understand.
Have the language coming forward, is the discussion there saying, no, take the point nine value and use that money to buy something somewhere else, or is it to pay them the one-tenth and get the unit there?
The point nine value, we can't buy something else for that, we can't, because it's not point, it, the way they are figuring out.
But my understanding is, the ultimate decision gets made by the Housing Partnership, not us?
I don't know.
We wrote the decision deferring the ultimate decision to the MOU.
Right, so as it stands now, the Housing Partnership makes the decision, what do they want to do? Get paid point nine or buy point one?
It's, it's.
It's not settled yet.
It's a moving target right now, and that's why I left it as, their interests, their interests are aligned with our interests.
So how can we agree to something that's not yet settled?
What's the purpose of the floor?
Unless you, unless you put some language there that, I can't sink my teeth into this.
I'm not exactly sure what we're agreeing to, that's the problem.
As a member of the Housing Opportunity Partnership, I'm not sure what you're agreeing to either.
Okay, then I don't agree.
Sorry.
All right, so I'll redraft.
This is not, this is not ripe for approval yet.
All right.
I won't redraft, we will send out.
We'll send out a.
Individual comment.
A cleaner drop.
Numbers, back to us individually.
Run it by my high school English teacher.
This is a.
If he's still alive.
It's not my best work, yes, I regret.
Might have been a six forty-five, yeah, been a long day.
This is asking, wait, it's asking us to affirm something that the Housing Partnership did on July seventeenth, is that the?
Yes, twenty seventeen, you don't remember that meeting?
Of twenty seventeen.
You don't remember that meeting?
And what they did on July seventeenth is yet to be, is yet to be affirmed or yet to be concluded.
I will send you.
Okay, so, all righty.
Very good.
Correspondence, reports from Town Council, anything from Town Council report, any Subcommittee reports, any unfinished business, any new business?
Um, just one thing, we had an excellent meeting with Donna Brewer for small cell, for small, small cell communication wireless facilities, whatever that, the whole thing is.
Five G.
On five G, on Wednesday, the days are all.
Tuesday, I think it was.
Stringing together, anyways, an excellent meeting, we are rolling right along with design guidelines to be situated in both, right now, the special permit rules and regs, as well as with the Selectmen under their regulations regarding small cell, the application process, the number of installations per application, and, and all of that stuff, so it's going really well, I'm really pleased that we got Donna Brewer involved, we have advertised for your next meeting to adopt the design regulations, because we need to adopt them before April fourteenth.
Soon before our next meeting, can you have something to distribute for us to look at before the meeting?
Should have it next week, Donna's making some final edits based on our discussion this week.
I threw some strange ideas into the mix, I don't know if any of those were acceptable.
Um, we forward them to, to Donna, some of them we did talk about this week, the whole premise of this is, nobody actually really knows everything this is gonna be, but we do know, if we don't do something, we're gonna get a lot of really ugly.
Yep.
Things on our poles, and we're gonna get an application with like a hundred installations, so what we're trying to do in this first round quickly is to make sure we put in at least basic design regulations, with concealment being the main, main design feature, concealment, you know, same colors, you know, integrated, if it's gonna be a streetlight, integrated within the design of the streetlight, and put those forward as well as application requirements and completeness of application requirements, we will probably learn a lot in the next year as this rolls out, and we might open all these regulations again in a year and say, okay, we should've done it this way and let's put it in now, so I, I just urge all of you to think about it.
Any language in there about double poles?
And there's double pole language in there, but I urge everyone to think about it, it's, it's critical for us, because what we've heard a lot is the industry's gonna drop off, you know, their hand truck of applications on the fifteenth, assuming nobody's gonna adopt a design, design guidelines.
Be like a discovery dump.
So it's critical for us to put something on the books as quickly as possible, and we'll probably learn from this process, so.
Did Donna have any opinion as to whether we could restrict the manufacture of the equipment, like the federal government does?
Like a Huawei?
Um, under the, you need to allow fair competition, it's difficult.
If the federal government gets away with it, why can't we?
That's very, it's, it's a perfect point, but I'm just telling you.
Well, we could put it in there and say, anything to the contract, you know, they can strike that part, but if we put it in there, if we don't put it in there, we can never do it, if we put it in there and the court says we can't, they strike just that part, as long as we put the language in there that, you know, if one property comes down, the rest is valid, you know, there's normal contract language.
All these are excellent questions, I assume we're gonna be having this conversation and a fluid conversation, even after we pass this first round.
But I, ideally, I'd like to see that stuff in there before the fourteenth.
Okay.
And how, we have a limited amount of time to make a decision.
The federal government has told us that we have to have our conditions in place by April fourteenth, or we have to accept whatever they jammed out of our throat.
I mean, after they submit their application, do, what kind of time limit do we have?
Ten days.
Ten days, ten days to declare its completeness.
Right, but after that.
Sixty, sixty days, sixty days.
So it's not.
No, but for everything, I mean, like.
But there's not much you can do in that six days, other than.
Make sure they conform to your regulations.
Other than get mad at yourself for not having put something in there before you.
No, no, I'm not saying that, I'm saying, yeah, so all you can do is make sure they conform to your regulations.
Yes, so thank goodness.
So you better have good regulations, right.
Thank goodness we hired a consultant, we'd never be able to meet this deadline, she's been very good, we'll send things out as soon as we can, it's really.
Trying to remember what the other one, I just, the last thing I threw in after asking if we can restrict equipment, the same as the federal government, I forget what the last one was, I sent to you.
I don't remember, it's been a long day dealing with an application that's not.
All right.
Come in front of us tonight, but.
I'll go check my emails and send it to you again.
Yeah, I just wanted to give you a heads up, it's going well, we're working very well with the Selectmen.
There was something I said, that.
I think that would work.
We could put, oh, yes, I know, if the technology changes, or no, if the federal government or some other entity determines that there is some type of a risk to the public or individuals, can we put some language in there that retroactively makes them remove it rather than just applying it to future applications?
Yeah, no grandfathering there.
So, you know, a lot of people are complaining that all these five G microwaves are a health hazard, but we're told we cannot object based upon a health hazard, if three years from now it is definitively shown that it is a health hazard and people can stop doing it, can we have language that says, come ye back, five G company, and remove the darn thing?
Yes.
Can we, have we put language like that in there?
Not a very strict of frequency.
I'd rather have it in there so the stuff that, so the stuff, they don't get some pre-existing rights and we can't make them move that, because they'll be dumping stuff in as fast as possible before any such a ruling ever possibly comes out.
There's also the ability to put sun setting.
We said make them take the towers down, didn't we, when we permitted the towers?
Antennas, when people are putting satellite antennas in their yard, big ones.
Well, well, not only that, but I mean, the, the, all the towers that we permitted, we did an overlay and so forth, and I thought as we permitted them, we said if these towers are no longer used or whatever, then you have to take them down.
I'm not talking about if they're no longer used, I'm talking about if some strong evidence shows that they are harmful to residences within eight hundred feet or something, can we make them move them?
Well, I, you know, I have my headphones all the time, you see me while I'm doing something, and all I'm hearing is five G now, and I don't even, what, what, is it an entirely new system?
Mm-hmm.
Like, I still have vinyl records.
Yep.
But, so, is the systems that we have now being superseded?
Yes, five G's.
And then, and then just further, because that's Bill's business, no, really.
It's all new hardware.
Yeah, so it's, 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 it's all new hardware and everything.
Yep.
So, okay, and so they're pushing that on us now, before we even know what the hell it is really, or whether it's set up or not.
There's, there is requirements to take down equipment that's either not working or.
Did you say that we, prior to this coming down in a couple of weeks, that we have an opportunity to put restrictions on it for the town of Burlington?
Design conditions.
Design.
That's the regulation.
Application submission conditions.
Yeah.
And application requirements.
And so you have, you have a consultant that's, okay, I'm, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to, a lot of things I vote on, I know what I'm voting on, but I wanna know about this.
Five G means they can send more rotation faster wirelessly.
Yeah.
The problem is, in order to do that, they have to have these antennas no more than a hundred feet apart.
Yeah, and the Chinese are gonna overrun us on it, 'cause they say they're way ahead of us.
So my, my condition, just so there's no misunderstanding, just so there's no misunderstanding, the last condition I'm looking for is not if the technology is obsolete or superseded, if the technology is deemed harmful.
Yeah, I, I have it, health hazard, federal government removal. Uh, other good news, we got a two-zero vote, thumbs up on our budget. We go to, we go to Ways and Means next Wednesday.
Excellent.
I thought we weren't presenting that.
I mean?
I thought we weren't presenting that according to somebody.
Thought we weren't what?
Presenting that.
Presenting what?
Was it that, but the whole thing of B-Cass?
The thing that you started at the beginning.
We don't present a.
Oh, oh, no, that was different.
He's joking.
All right, let's all laugh.
Mr. Chairman, was there, was there a Subcommittee on something this week?
Yes.
Was there a report on that?
Can be. Which I'd, uh.
It was on three twenty-eight, three thirty, Cambridge Street, the office building.
Yep, we could send something out.
Basically, the old, the, the one that's next to the older house that we.
The traffic, which traffic talked about and say.
Sort of, but we haven't had, we haven't had ever.
He agreed to almost everything we brought up, building a sidewalk all the way to Wilmington Road, we'll, we'll put it some notice.
Yep, we can send that out, it might be Monday, but yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yep, certainly.
It sounded like he was very anxious to give his client what he needs to get in this.
He's used to dealing with New York City people, we were, we were a dream.
But they still haven't told us what the agency is that's moving in, and I personally do not feel comfortable not knowing.
Well, he said that he would ask him, he said.
Yeah, he said he would ask, see if they could tell us, and hopefully they'll say yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
But he did say it was, not I said it was. But he did say it was not ice, it was...
Yes.
Yes, he told us what it wasn't, but he still can't tell us what it is.
Call me paranoid, I wanna know what it is before I...
If you look on his Facebook, he's connected with someone that's associated with an agency, so that might be a hint.
With what?
If you look on his Facebook or LinkedIn, you see he's associated with an agency, so that might give you a point in that direction.
Oh, you can tell us off-camera what that agency is?
I don't, I don't remember what it was.
Oh, okay.
I looked him up when he was here before us.
Okay, okay.
Being someone who refuses to let Facebook near my computer for spy reasons, I don't have access to that information, and Facebook doesn't have access to mine.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anything, okay. Anything else?
Yeah, sorry, just, uh, one, one quick thing is, we've been approving stuff in the downtown center all along, but we request that they put the lanterns up, but as I'm driving down, I'm realizing everybody's putting different lanterns.
And we always, we always ask, we put the same ones.
Yeah, it really needs to be...
Uniform.
It, it needs to be uniform. There used to be, needs to be, we need to have a spec on one particular lantern, and that's the one they need to put up.
We kinda...
We had multiple lanterns.
We had, it needs to be similar. We don't have, we don't have a spec that has to be.
I thought we, we did that when we did the corner by Shaws and so forth, and got the lanterns up.
Yeah, but then nobody liked those, 'cause they broke so easily. Nobody liked those lights, 'cause they broke so easily.
Oh, really?
So...
Whatever, whatever has to, in other words, we need to have one, so there's no question as to what they should be putting up.
Yeah, I, I think even the construction, I mean, as I come up Skilton towards, at CVS, you look at the, the one there, and the whole bottom's peeled off because, you know, the salt's got added. So maybe something more of a robust finish on it versus what currently is there. So maybe kind of a best-in-class lantern we can, we can put in there.
Yeah, if, and we should prohibit internally lit box signage.
Yeah.
If you do nothing else.
That's right.
So what's that?
Internally lit box signage. It's just, yeah. If you do nothing else, I think that would be huge.
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 Motion?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Moved in second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, seven, zero, zero, at eight fifty-one, oh, fifty-two.